Seven o'clock. I'll call the Tuesday, January ninth, two thousand twenty-four meeting of the Klatsepp County Planning Commission to order. You'll all join me in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the United States of America for its broad and universal legitimacy and legitimacy of its authority.
We may have the roll call, please.
Clark Powers.
Here.
Mike Magyar.
Here.
Katie Pritchard is excused. Carrie Johnson.
Here.
Jeremy Leonard.
Here.
And Jason Crashhour.
Here.
Christopher Farr.
Present.
All right. Everybody's had a chance to look over the agenda. Would somebody like to? Are there any calls for amendments to the agenda by any commission? No? Does somebody want to make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented then?
I move we adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to adopt the agenda as present, as presented. All those in favor, please signify with aye.
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 Closed by nay. Motion passes. Agenda is adopted as presented. And this is now a time in the meeting where we allow public comment. So this is an opportunity for anyone to give a brief presentation about any land use or planning issue in the county of concern. That is not part of the public hearings this morning. Did anyone write or call in? Or opportunity to comment?
One person, Nadia Gardner, did, but she was attending. She is no longer available to.
Okay. Is there any members of the public sitting in the room that would like to make a presentation? Seeing none, there's no business from the public this morning other than possibly in the public hearings. We have several, seven public hearings, several, as well as seven public hearings this morning, all to do with adopting ordinances related to land use planning. So we'll start with Agenda Item One, which is a legislative hearing regarding the Ordinance twenty-four zero five, Amendments to the Law Doc, Article Three, Regarding Nonconforming Uses and Structure Regulations. Does any of the planning commissioners have a conflict of interest to report? I see none. Does anyone object to the jurisdiction of the commission to hear this matter at this time? And I'm not seeing any. So if we could begin with the staff report, please.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is David Cook. I'll be presenting Ordinance twenty-four oh five, which is an ordinance that proposes code amendments to the Land and Water Development and Use Code Section on Nonconforming Uses and Structures. These proposed code amendments have been presented to your commission twice now, once in September and once in November. And staff has made changes to the proposed code amendments based on your feedback. On January third, staff presented Ordinance twenty-four oh five, which included all of your commission's recommendations to the Board of Commissioners at a regular work session. Three commissioners were present, and they asked some clarifying questions, but had no further comment or request for revision. Staff is requesting a motion to recommend the Board of Commissioners adopt Ordinance twenty-four oh five. Upon this recommendation, staff will bring the ordinance to the Board of Commissioners at the next available public hearing for first reading. Let me know if you have any questions. Thanks.
Thank you for that presentation. Are there any comments or questions from the Planning Commission about anything given in the presentation of the facts on this revision to the Law Doc? None? Okay. Well, then, at this point, I will call for public testimony and open the hearing for anyone from the public to speak. Not seeing anyone in the room that's likely to speak and not seeing anyone online. I will ask if there are any members of the public who wish to speak. Yes?
Nadia Gardner would like to speak.
All right. Well, I'll just say then that state your name and address before speaking. If you're speaking representative, in a representative capacity, identify who you represent. And please limit your comments to about three minutes. And make sure that any points you bring up are done so in a way that makes it clear for the parties that might review and appeal on this matter to understand what your point of view is. So go ahead, please, again with your name and address before speaking.
Thank you, Chair Farrar and Planning Commissioners. My name is Nadia Gardner, eight zero five, eight zero two eight five, Woodland Heights Road, Arch Cape, Oregon, nine seven one zero two. I was actually here for the Business from the Public section of this agenda, but I had a blip in my, our power keeps going on and off. So maybe for some reason I was erased, but I was actually present. So I'm going to go ahead and give my comment more generally now. So I'm really thankful that the county is making efforts to reduce homelessness and support affordable housing. It's really great that staff are focusing on keeping and making people housed in currently available housing, as well as working with cities to develop affordable housing. We really need to support housing for our residents, our local workers, families, and our income limited seniors. On the other hand, we do not need to help development of vacation homes and single family homes that are selling for over a half a million dollars. Those are being developed at a rapid pace. All my builder friends are telling me how busy they are with those, like years out. We need to stay razor focused on needed housing. And in the unincorporated areas, we need to make sure that the county has the money, capacity, and interest in building and maintaining new infrastructure to support any added housing. Starting next month, staff is proposing that the Planning Commission recommend a series of changes that will drive more and new development in unincorporated areas. They focus on areas with water and sanitary service, mostly in Arch Cape and Miles Crossing. These changes will, number one, reduce lot sizes to city-sized lots. And two, significantly reduce public involvement, allowing staff to issue multifamily housing and road development permits without hearing from neighbors and community members who have expertise on their neighborhoods. I live in Arch Cape. Beyond water and sanitary, we're also served by Oregon State Police and the sheriff and the Cannon Beach Fire District. The county and all of these local entities are very stretched by current levels of residents and visitors. Our roads are almost all gravel and are either public or private, which means that they're not county maintained. They're full of potholes from current traffic. Down here, we get a hundred to a hundred and twenty inches of rain a year. We don't have stormwater control systems, and many areas already suffer from flooding. My street often floods as a neighbor is on an undersized lot, and her stormwater is not absorbed there. It spills into a ditch, crosses a road, and pours into another neighbor's garage. Despite these neighbors asking the county for help for four years, they have not fixed the problem. This is just one example of many. Having city-sized lots will make this more common across the community. We are rural residential, not a city, and we're forty-five minutes away from this county seat. We don't have the infrastructure or the services needed to be a city. Unfortunately, due to proximity to the beach and Cannon Beach, new houses in Arch Cape are now unaffordable for locals. Almost all new development here is large, single-family vacation homes. Many of them are vacation rentals. They sell for six hundred thousand dollars and up. There continues to be no cap on vacation rentals, which makes this problem worse. The proposed changes here will not result in new needed housing without subsidies or an organized, lower-income focused effort like last year's proposed workforce housing, which, by the way, I did not oppose. In summary, these changes will not result in needed housing and will cause more expensive problems over time. And I ask that you not recommend their adoption when they come before you, especially the reduction in lot sizes. Instead, the county should focus on supporting needed, lower-cost, multifamily housing in cities and within city urban growth boundaries that can be served by the full suite of city services. Thank you.
Thank you for that comment. It's a little bit out of order for what we're taking on right now, but we do appreciate those general comments. And I'm sorry that you've had power outage problems that made it difficult to get in at the appropriate time. So we'll move on with the public hearing, which is still open regarding, I have to go back and look at the ordinance number, Ordinance twenty-four zero five. And I assume there's no one else that wishes to address the Planning Commission on that matter at this time. So I will close the public testimony on that matter. And we'll move to a discussion by the Planning Commission in the form of a motion initially, or if you have some discussion points you'd like to toss around before we make a vote, please do so. Any member sitting here with me wish to chime in? No? Any member on the virtual side? Nothing?
Nope.
I'll just make a couple of quick comments on it because we have a lot to do this morning. And I still must say that regarding, I'm not sure how to phrase this, but regarding the amount or the percentage damage or destruction of a building that's nonconforming use. And that's, an example would be on page twelve of our packet. Item B, as in bowling, is about mid-page there. Talks about a nonconforming structure devoted to a nonconforming use is damaged, destroyed, or demolished by an action of the property owner or an authorized agent to the extent amounting to seventy-five percent or more of its real market value, it shall be reconstructing conformance with current standards. I find that really quite a high percentage damage. And I would like to see that reduced down to fifty percent or even lower than that because I just have a concern that a lot of outdated, nonconforming structures will just continue on and on, getting replaced as they wear out, and that there's never anything new developed in some areas of the county. I'm not really in favor of this ordinance as it's worded right now with that provision that crops up in a couple of places in the text of this document. And so that's my comment. Does anyone have a point of view on that specific matter in the?
Well, question for staff. The way I read that was seventy-five percent or more, that means you've got to be current. You've got to be current standards, not the old, nonconforming standards. Am I incorrect about that?
Correct, Commissioner.
So they would have to come to some variance or hearings officer to go back to their original, nonconforming legal standard.
That's correct.
Okay. So that's why I'm fine with this one. That much damage, I think they should come current.
You know how easy it is to reach seventy-five percent of the value of a house, though, or a building? I mean, if you're going to put siding, windows, and doors in a building, some of these places, you could easily reach seventy-five percent. That means that existing nonconformant uses, you know, if they decide to make it look nicer, fit the area more, they could very easily be over seventy-five percent. I mean, as a builder, if I'm going to upgrade some plumbing, some electrical, and re-site a building, and we're all, you know, homeowners or people who have had houses, you guys know how easily that cost goes up. I think that seventy-five percent is easily attainable. And I mean, a lot of these buildings, they don't have a lot of value, you know, as far as what they're appraised at. And doing some of these things would make them worth more value. So then, would it be seventy-five percent of the current value or what they would appraise for after that? It's, to me, it's, I've seen it, I've seen it, you know, doing minimal repairs reach seventy-five percent of the current value of a home very quickly. That's kind of what I have to say about that. I was concerned about that as well, you know? If you have, you say you have a nonconforming business that's in Jeffers Gardens or something, and they're in an older house, and they're using it as a business, but it's legal now. And that business, they want to, or that home, they want to upgrade. Then they have to conform to everything or go for a variance when they've already been performing as what they are. They just want to, you know, improve the visual aspect or the usability of the place, not so much more traffic there or, you know, bigger business hours. They're just wanting to improve the way it looks. They may not be approved.
So if I go in to replace the windows and they happen to be seventy-five percent of them, that doesn't mean I have to go back and redo the entire structure to bring it nonconformant.
It says that you have to bring it up to comply. It does. That's the way this reads, is that you are no longer in compliance.
Commissioners, if I may, so that the section there that talks about damage by property owner amounting to seventy-five percent or more of the real market value shall be in conformance or acquire a variance. This is only talking about in the event of damage or destruction by the property owner, right? So, you know, if you blow off the second store of your house somehow by doing something, you know, you might reach seventy-five percent by your own actions.
But would you have to bring the entire structure of that that's non-damaged up to current standards also? I think that's the point he was trying to make.
That's correct, yes.
Okay. So he's correct, and he had to bring the entire structure up to current standards.
That's correct, yes, if you want to rebuild it.
It's also in a different section that if you do, in a three-year period, alterations, nonconforming structure, it refers to seventy-five percent. So it has, it's in another part of this ordinance that doesn't have anything to do with damages caused by the homeowner, correct?
Yeah, that seventy-five percent is a bar that is fairly consistent throughout this code section that applies to a few different items.
Yeah, but it refers not only damages by a homeowner. It also refers to if you're going to upgrade and remodel, correct? I'm looking at page ten, number two. If in a three-year period, alterations to a nonconforming structure or a structure containing a nonconforming use exceeds seventy-five percent of the real market value, all structures shall be brought into conformance with requirements of this ordinance.
Correct.
So that has nothing to do with damages created by an owner. Those would be?
So I would like to also expand upon what David said. And so the seventy-five percent is what is the current threshold in the code. So this wasn't a reduction or anything new that staff proposed. And the way that we typically handle this with customers who may be coming in and looking to do renovations to a nonconforming structure is we tell them that they have the ability to phase the improvements in. Because a lot of people, first of all, can't afford to do a huge overhaul of their existing structure. And so as they phase it in, and that value increases due to that initial set of improvements, it's rolling three years. So that if you do improvements in year one, you come back, your value maybe has gone up ten thousand dollars. So that gives you more leeway to work with. You can do your improvements the second year, the third year as long as you stay under that seventy-five percent threshold. But then, that first year will fall off come year four. And so you're continually rolling it. That's how we've explained it and used it. Maybe it's not the correct way to do it, but we've tried to make it as user-friendly as possible for people who are trying to improve nonconforming structures. And I think to Chair Farrar's point, you know, we would all love to see new development, but I think that there's also value in reusing existing places as we have more discussions about, you know, cost of building materials, as we raise concerns about climate change. I mean, there's value to reusing buildings that are already there as opposed to tearing down and constructing new.
That touches on exactly what I was trying to prove. Thank you. You worded it a little bit better, you know? I mean, if you have a house that is not conforming to property setbacks, and they want to re-size, that would be a nonconforming use, correct? It's not conforming to the current standard. And they come in and they want to re-size their house, is what I was trying to, it's better for me to preserve rather than tear down and try and reduce. So what we're doing is we're setting roadblocks for some of these people to where now they have to go through a variance if they just want to upgrade their house. And I know it's what it is, but these are the notes that I made on this that I don't like the existing, as to what it is because to reach that seventy-five percent threshold just for somebody to want to upgrade their house, you've got a house that maybe has a four-foot setback, and they're supposed to be at five, yet they want to put new siding, windows, doors, and a roof, there's seventy-five percent of the value of their home. Now they have to go through another, which is a variance, and another application process, and it's just roadblocks that we're setting up for people that just want to improve their place, either home or business or whatever it is. I do agree with some of the other things in there, you know? There's, this is a real broad spectrum of disorder. It refers to personal business and everything.
So what's your suggestion? Are you proposing an amendment to what's been presented?
I have a question. So it says that it's what is assessed by the county. I understand that. Or a private appraisal. Is that something that they would pay a fee, and the county would hire a private appraiser, or they can have, they can provide their own?
Yep.
Okay. That was just one of the other questions I had.
Yeah, and we have had a couple of cases recently where people have come in with their own appraisals. And because the market values have been so high, the structures are appraising much higher than what they're being assessed at by the county. So it's actually been working in their favor.
Okay, that was good discussion. Are there any further comments, especially the two members on virtual attendance? Don't see anything.
I don't have any comments, but I thought that was really awesome discussion. Thank you for all of your thoughtful analysis of those things. You guys obviously have a lot of expertise in the area.
Okay, thank you for that, Commissioner Magyar. And at this point, I guess we could move to a motion on this if someone would like to make the plunge. This would be Amendments to Law Doc, Article Three, Regarding Nonconforming Uses and Structure Regulations. And we can either send it as-is to the Board of Commissioners with the recommendation to approve as-is, or?
I'll make the motion. I'll move that we recommend to the Board of Commissioners that they adopt Ordinance twenty-four dash zero five as presented by staff.
It's been moved by Commissioner Johnson to recommend to the Board of Commissioners that they adopt the Amendments to Law Doc, Article Three, as presented in our packet. Is there a second to that?
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded now by Commissioner Powers to recommend to the County Board of Commissioners to adopt the ordinance for Article Three. Having trouble finding all the article numbers here this morning.
Twenty-four oh five.
Ordinance twenty-four oh five. So is everybody clear on my muddled presentation of the motion and what we're about to vote on? I think everybody's in concert on this, so I'll ask for roll call votes. You may have that.
Clark Powers.
Aye.
Mike Magyar.
Aye.
Katie Pritchard is absent. Carrie Johnson.
Aye.
Jeremy Leonard.
Aye.
Jason Crashhour.
Aye.
Christopher Farr.
Aye. Motion passes with all present in favor of the adoption. So with that, we can move on to Agenda Item Two, which is concerning Ordinance twenty-four oh six, Klatsepp Plains Community Plan. And this is a legislative hearing. And so I'll ask if any of the commissioners have a conflict of interest to report on this matter. And I see none. And I'll ask if there's anyone who objects to the jurisdiction of the commission to hear this matter at this time. And I see none. So with that, I'll ask for a staff report on this.
Okay. Chair, I have one staff report that actually covers all of Ordinances twenty-four oh six through twenty-four eleven. I don't know if you would like to open all of those for the public hearing at the same time? Or I can just give my one staff report, and then we could just go through the ordinances?
Well, I'll just say that this was a lot of meaty stuff to go through. And I would like it actually taken in smaller pieces than to just put it all out at once.
Okay. Well, my staff report is basically an overview of the process for the six community plans. There really are not specific findings, per se, for each of the community plans. So I will just give my general overview. And then, as we go through the ordinances, I can answer any questions you have. So we began the process of updating the comp plan back in two thousand and nineteen. And that included not only Goals one through four, six through fourteen, and Goal nineteen, but it also included updates to the six community plans. Those plans were adopted between nineteen seventy-nine and nineteen eighty, and some have been amended over the years. Klatsepp Plains in particular has seen several amendments because it's been a primary area where we have focused development, especially residential development. But it was really time to bring all those complaints, all those community plans up to date. And so we worked initially with the six citizen advisory committees, one for each of the planning areas that are here. We also worked with the countywide citizen advisory committee. We brought these plans before the Planning Commission, I believe, in August of two thousand and twenty-two. And we're ready to bring them forward to the Board of Commissioners in September of two thousand and twenty-two. But they were removed from the Agenda item, Agenda at that time. We put the plans through additional filters of a legal land use council review. Also, our county council reviewed them. And then there was further input from staff and the county manager as we worked through the policies to determine what had to be, a shall or a will as opposed to a may or should. So things that are mandatory under state statute or Oregon administrative rules, and things that are at the discretion of the county. And so we also applied that filter down on each of the community plans and then received some additional input from the board as we took these forward to work sessions. So the plans have been revised over the course of the past four years, going on five years now. You'll see that they're much reduced from where they started out. Part of that is just cleanup of the narrative and streamlining the narrative. Part of it is just going through the policies and eliminating things that are outside of the county purview, things that we could not legally do, where we had some instances of policies being recommended by the citizen advisory. some instances of policies being recommended by the citizen advisory committees. And then again, just doing that general cleanup of should and shall and may and would. So the plans are all before you today, and really, staff is here. Myself and Ian Sisson and our senior planner are here to answer any questions that you might have about any of the specific plans. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for that report, and I do realize the logic of making an overarching kind of staff report regarding all of the six plans since they're similarity, similar in structure and purpose. So that's, that was helpful information to review the history of them. As to how the Planning Commission should take them up, though, I think we need to take them one at a time and open up the possibility of some discussion in that process. So at this point, I'll open the hearing to any public testimony that anyone wants to make on ordinance twenty-four oh six, which is the Clatsop Plains Community Plan 2040. And again, I see no members of the public present, and so I assume we don't have any testimony. And therefore, we can kind of skip down and I'll close the opportunity for public comment. And we can discuss this a little bit amongst the commission, or if you wish to make a motion at this time. That's acceptable?
I have one question, and that's on page sixty-five of our packet regarding the goal one, going all the way down to in order to meet the goal, the county shall, and then there's number four, expand the boundaries of the planning area to include Fort Stephens, portions of the Columbia River, and the ocean shore. Why?
So originally, in the late 1970s, when the planning areas were being drawn up, that area was included in the Clatsop Plains Community Plan. And then at some point, it got dropped out. And so we had unincorporated areas that weren't covered by a community plan. So we added them back to the Clatsop Plains.
Good, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions there? I guess I have an overall comment that, again, takes in all six plans. Each one's a little bit different, but my overall take on them in reading them, and I did read each one, word for word, and I still find there needs to be a very serious edit of this document. None of these are without, to me, errors, errors in telling you which map you're referring to, the text doesn't match the actual map numbers. Some of the maps contain extraneous features that are not relevant and would be better removed. Labeling on some of the maps is a bit unclear. For example, on page thirty-six of our packet is the Clatsop Plains Planning Area, where apparently Clatsop Plains is divided into two parts, planning area is. And I think each part should be clearly labeled that it's part of the planning area. As the map stands now, it shows Clatsop Plains to be this thing up along the estuary, this body of land. And in fact, most people think of Clatsop Plains being the segment that runs parallel with the coast down to kind of the Gerhard Seaside area. So it's things like that on many maps and in the text, and some paragraphs repeated within, and I know you used some of the same wording at the overview section of each of the six plans, but within one plan, there's places where the exact same paragraph is repeated a couple times. So nobody's looked through this just wanting to edit it. And lots of little minor spelling errors that, you know, by now shouldn't probably be there. And, but I know the meat of these things kind of comes down to what are the policies. And I just, I understand the reasons for reducing the number of policies that were contained in these due to the legal constraints that we have going both directions, like trying to take on something we don't have a right to do, but also not doing what we're supposed to do under state law. So I understand those constraints. But that aside, I really must say that I think the policies were so watered down and so minimal that, you know, what I thought was a good idea originally of these individual plans, I just wonder what they really add. I was there during a lot of this work on these plans, and I went to a number of different areas. I didn't just focus on one particular plan area. And there was the, you know, a lot of interest and passion about describing what made the area special. And I think they genuinely wanted it to be known that Clatsop County is diverse. It's not just one uniform landscape, topography, or land cover type, or population, or any of those measures that you might make about land. There's a lot of differences within the county, and so I was hoping that these plans would, you know, celebrate those differences and literally state what the residents of those areas valued the most that made the area distinct. And I think a lot of that was kind of lost, especially from some of the plans, less so in a few of the other plans. So those are kind of my broad brush comments about all six plans together. But for Clatsop Plains Planning Area, I will say, other than it needing a good editorial review to clean it up a little bit, I thought it was perhaps the best of the plans and that it had many goals and policies spelled out there at the end, which is the real nuts and bolts or the gears that's going to turn this thing in the first place. That those were consistent with what was written in the narrative about the planning area, and that they, for the most part, did cover all the things that I think the public brought out in those sections where culture and natural areas and resources and problems were all brought to light. I thought these policies, for the most part, did a pretty fair job of covering that. And I guess I just have one specific question about one specific policy that I'd like to ask about. And it's on page sixty-six of our packet, and it has to do with Goal Two, which is to preserve to the fullest extent the scenic, aesthetic, ecological qualities of the coastal shorelands and other shorelands of Clatsop Plains. Then it talks about general development policies, and I'm looking at Policy D there, and I see it says, "The county shall consider the adequacy of water, sewer, fire protection, and other public services when reviewing applications for commercial development in Clatsop Plains." So my question is, why is it limited only to commercial development there and not include residential or industrial or some other uses? Was there a specific reason why it signaled that commercial that I just still would look?
So if I recall correctly, Chair, I believe that Policy D is actually a holdover from the original comprehensive plan. I don't recall any specific discussion about this particular policy and that it should only be for commercial. So there would be no reason why it could not be changed to residential and commercial, or new development, or whatever your commission would like to recommend?
Yeah, I would, it's just, I would think that those public services would be important to any land use there equally. So I don't know if there could be agreement to make a quick change on that. It's kind of small. And trying to go through all six of these and make little detailed changes maybe, but what would it take to make a change on that emotion and then?
I don't know if you'd need a motion, but I think if there's a consensus and agreement among the Planning Commission members, we could do that. And then we would just, the final motion would be to recommend as amended.
Yeah, okay. Is there any agreement with me on that, or does everybody think I'm maybe spent too long looking at this?
Well, I think the county does already consider, you know, the adequate services of all those things and some other portion. When you're applying for development, you have to have your water sign-offs, you have to have your sewer sign-offs, you have to have all those things in order to get a building permit regardless of whether or not it's in this plan. So maybe redundant just because it's taken care of elsewhere, I thought. I mean, you could include it in your plan, but it doesn't make a whole lot of difference in the long run. It was fine with me to make the change if you'd like.
Anybody else?
I'm neutral. If we want to go that way, that's fine. Make the change? Yes, sure.
But it's fine with me as well.
Let's just drop that and...
Go ahead, Mike, or Commissioner Magyar.
Oh, I just said I'm, I'm kind of neutral as well, but it's, it's fine with me, whatever way we go.
Okay. It's a little too lukewarm a feeling, so I'll just say, let's, let's just move on to see if somebody wants to make a motion to adopt. And here, I would recommend you turn to page fourteen of our packet and refer to an ordinance adopting Clatsop Plains Community Plan 2040, Ordinance twenty-four oh six, if somebody wants to make a motion around that.
I'll move we adopt ordinance twenty-four oh six, Clatsop Plains Community Plan as presented by staff.
Okay. It's been moved by Commissioner Powers to move, to recommend to the Board of Commissioners that they adopt ordinance twenty-four oh six, an ordinance adopting Clatsop Plains Community Plan 2040. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Sorry, Commissioner Magyar, Commissioner Johnson beat you to the punch, so it's seconded by Commissioner Johnson. And so it's been moved and seconded to recommend to the Board of Commissioners to adopt ordinance twenty-four oh six as presented in this packet. So we'll take a roll call vote. All those in favor will respond under a roll call rule.
Clark Powers?
Aye.
Mike Magyar?
Aye.
Carrie Johnson?
Aye.
Jeremy Linder?
Aye.
Jeremy Linder? Oh, here we go. Jason Crashard?
Aye.
Christopher Far?
Aye. So the motion carries unanimously with those present, and the ordinance will be sent to the commissioners for adoption or their, their vote on it. Now we can move on to, I think, Agenda Item Three, Ordinance twenty-four oh seven, the Elsie Jewell Community Plan. So this will kind of mirror what we just went through. And that plan begins on page seventy-two of our packet. And this is a legislative hearing again, so we'll ask again if any commissioner has a conflict of interest to report this matter. And I see none. And does anyone from the public object to jurisdiction of the commission to hear this matter at this time? And there is none. And we've already had the general staff report, so I could ask for public testimony at this point. I'll open it to anybody from the public to speak their minds on this proposed ordinance twenty-four oh seven, the Elsie Jewell Community Plan. And I see no members of the public, so we're without public comment. And I will pose public testimony and ask if any members of the Planning Commission have questions for staff about this particular plan.
Yes, I have one question. On page one oh four of our packet, and it's the paragraph just above land use designations, which says, "Because of limited access to gas stations, new construction should be encouraged to have dedicated electrical vehicle charging stations. Such stations may also be able to be used to generate limited amounts of energy for residents in event of a power outage." So I need a little clarification on the rationale of, is this to use electrical vehicle charging stations to give a homeowner some electricity for the home, or? I just, I'm sorry, I don't understand why this is here.
And with the Elsie Jewell and Seaside Rural Community, they, the one committee actually covered the two planning areas. And so they had, their members had many concerns about being isolated in the event of a disaster, or a major storm, or an earthquake or something. And so they wanted to encourage sustainability, self-sustainability. And so one of the items that they talked about was, and I don't know how the science on this works, but you can draw energy from your car's electric battery and power your house, or portions of your house, or particular appliances for limited amounts of time. And so that if you had an electrical vehicle charging station in some of these rural areas where you don't usually see them, that it would give the opportunity to increase the self-sustainability if there were a natural disaster or some other sort of event.
If they had purchased an electric vehicle.
Right.
I actually like that idea, that concept. The short paragraph there doesn't explain it very well, I think. But certainly, it's well-known that people with electric vehicles do have an option of somehow feeding that electrical power back into their home for a temporary power source during an outage.
That's possible. I haven't seen it done, but anyways, it's an idea. Whether it's practical or not, I mean, I don't have a problem with it being in there. So it's a should be encouraged. It's not a shall. It's not mandated by anything, so.
As a background, it's not really in the policy.
It's not even a policy.
It's not in the policy. It's just background information. Yeah. I was just, I was just trying to... I was just, I was just trying to understand the rationale, that's all.
I think just, you know, as a overall, the problems that I have regarding all these plans, is there's plenty of little issues that we can come up with, um, I would just say that I, I don't want to let the uh, perfect get in the way of the good. And that we can, we could spend a whole lot of time going through and it's been gone through by staff and a lot of other people and trying to figure out, well, what little thing should be in here, what I don't like about it, what I do like about it, but I don't want to let the perfect get in the way of the good in this.
That's fine, yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment and I totally agree with Kerry on this. There's, there have, the staff has done a tremendous job organizing, uh, for years now. I mean, maybe it's been uh, three or so at least and um, a lot of people have had their fingers in this, including a planning commission that I wasn't even a member of. So I don't even know what you guys went through with this, but I was on one of the committees and you know, we met and people showed up or they didn't and they commented or they didn't. And uh, I think this phrase, perfect getting in the way of the good is exactly the spirit. So I just wanted to reiterate that and uh, say I agreed with Ca- Commissioner Johnson on that. Thank you.
There was a lot of hearings and that's how something like that uh, ended up in the plan as it was suggested and agreed by consensus at that point.
That's fine, yeah.
Ended up in the, in the document, so.
Okay, um, I have a few comments I'd like to make about this particular plan. Uh, first of all, the goals and objectives session, section is just one page, so there's not a lot in there in the way of policies. And um, I was kind of surprised by that because I recall that most of these areas, uh, they had, um, the local residents had many concerns about many different issues and um, certainly some of those seem, would have seemed to have been appropriate for, for policies specific to that geographical area of our county. And case in point, with the Elsie Jewell Plan is um, under natural hazards, there's um, there's one policy and um, talks about educating households uh, to be self sufficient for minimum two weeks during natural hazards, which, natural disasters, which, which is very good and very reasonable. I was, I was surprised there was nothing about wildfire uh, considered in there. This is a very um, you know, wooded area, um, lots of forest lands adjacent to where homes are and um, I was surprised that wasn't in there at all, um.
So Chair, if I may address some of those comments, when we as staff looked at the um, policies that were in the plans, so some policies were not related to land use at all. And that was especially prevalent in a lot of the Seaside Rural and Elsie Jewell Community Plans where they talked about things like composting or, you know, banning plastic takeout containers and things, so not related to land use. Those we removed. Other policies, as we did through all of the community plans, that were applicable to the entire county, were pulled out and either incorporated into the other general goal elements. So in this case, wildfire would have been addressed in Goal Seven. And unless there was something very specific to a planning area that was called out by the Citizen Advisory Committee members, anything that was generically applicable regarding anything was moved to the appropriate goal in the main comprehensive plan.
Okay, well, that's, that's helpful, hear that. Um, I, and maybe this is true for, for what other notes I have here that, for the Elsie Jewell Plan, there's no policies for open space or historic um, features. And um, yet, the community in the, in the narrative part expresses that the importance of, of both these to that region and um, is this another case where all that stuff to do with open space and historic uh, sites and structures and things like that got moved to uh, Goal Five or something?
Yeah, so again, without going back through the different iterations, I can't recall one hundred percent off the top of my head. I know that anything generic would have been moved, um, but I don't recall specific recommendations other than perhaps working with um, the, the Klatzup Tribe when uh, historic remains might be found or archaeological remains. And that I think is covered in Goal Five.
Mm-hmm.
So but the, I, as I recall, this particular group did not have a lot of structures or sites that they identified and said, we must consider these as historic. There is some talk in, I think, Seaside Rural about Hamlet, but, in the Hamlet Cemetery.
Yeah. Well, personally, I'm kind of left in a quandary here because um, my, my reaction to this plan, uh, kind of standing alone would be that I was going to vote against it, but, but nobody's here from that community and so I don't know who to turn to. I wish there was somebody I could, could just ask, do you like this? You live there, does this, does this explain what your area of the county is like? Is this what's important there? But there's nobody here for that feedback and um, a little bit of a frustration for me. But in my notes here, I have my vote on this one as no. But in light of what I've heard, who knows how I will vote. So I'll ask if uh, any of the Commissioners here would like to step forward and make a motion regarding uh, what we recommend be done with Ordinance twenty four zero seven. I didn't mean to be so bleak, um, I'll try to say it more cheerfully. Will a Commissioner please step forward and represent the Elsie Jewell Planning Area by making a motion regarding adoption of twenty four zero seven?
Oh, you want me to do it, okay. I move that, uh, we adopt Ordinance twenty four oh seven, the Elsie Jewell Community Plan as presented by staff.
Okay, uh, it's been moved by Commissioner Powers to uh, recommend that the Ordinance twenty four zero seven as presented be adopted by the County Planning Commissioners, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Johnson, so we have a motion before us to uh, send Ordinance twenty four zero seven, Elsie Jewell Community Plan, uh, on to the Board of Commissioners for their adoption and we will take a roll call vote on this, please.
Clark Powers?
Aye.
Mike Magyar?
Aye.
Kerry Johnson?
Aye.
Jeremy Linder?
Aye.
Jason Crashard?
Aye.
Christopher Farr?
Aye. So the motion passes unanimously by the six of us present and the uh, ordinance as presented in our packet will be uh, sent on to the County Commissioners for their consideration with our recommendation of approval. So, uh, we'll move on now to um, Item Four on our agenda, which is uh, Ordinance twenty four zero eight, the Lewis and Clark Only Waluski Community Plan. And um, this is, even though it's a little bit redundant, I guess I'll, I'll go through the um, standard procedure of uh, the opening statement that this is a legislative hearing regarding uh, Ordinance twenty four zero eight, uh, Lewis and Clark Only Waluski Community Plan. And I'll ask if any Commissioner has a conflict of interest to report on this matter.
I will say that I was involved in the process for this community plan and um, I will say that I don't believe I have any conflicts of interest, but it, it should be known that I was working on this and um, I'm also going to vote on it, so whatever that means, that's where that's at.
Uh, that, that's very good, it's good that you mentioned that, but I, I attended several of these meetings as well, but you are actually, I think, Chair of this one maybe, but, but that's fine, I think that gives you uh, maybe a little lift above the rest of us and understanding everything that went into it, so we'll.
Well, and also I wasn't, I wasn't a member of the Planning Commission at the time, so, but I am now, of course.
Yes, you are and a fine member at that and I, I don't think there's any real concern about a conflict of interest in this case. Um, is there anyone who objects to the jurisdiction of the Commission to hear this matter at this time? And um, I see none. So at this point, I'll, since we've kind of got our, our base staff report under our belt already, I'll just call for uh, public testimony and open uh, the floor to any speakers that would like to come forward and comment about this uh, Ordinance twenty four zero eight. And uh.
I'm here, um, yeah.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Uh, thank you.
You are recognized, please, please give your name and address though for the record.
Nadia Gardner, eight zero two eight five, Woodland Heights, Arch Cape nine seven one zero two. I wasn't planning on staying for this part of the meeting, but um, seeing that there's um, not other members of the public, I felt important to listen in and maybe give comment. Um, I was going to wait till Southwest Coastal, but I've got to go back to work. Um, so this is just a general comment, um, I, um, thank you, Commissioner, Chair Farrar, for your initial comments on this because I'm in agreement. Um, you know, we started the process four or five years ago, um, you know, I was on the Planning Commission and then I was later the Chair of the Planning Commission and I also attended a variety of these meetings, though I didn't sit on a community planning group. And um, I've got to say, Southwest um, historically had a really good plan, very detailed, um, lots of um, things that were still reflected in current residents, even though it was from the seventies. But the committees all came together really excited about updating these plans that were our, all, you know, had a lot of good stuff in them, but definitely needed to be updated. Um, and, and went through the process diligently and through the process, um, really lost faith in the process. And um, I think that's reflected in today, um, that, you know, nobody showed up, people aren't showing up because they've lost faith. And um, it, it was really a sad state of affairs and I think the whole process was kind of a debacle and what you're left with are really shells of what these community members put together. And um, you know, you have this long list on the beginning of each um, plan saying who was involved, but in the end, I know a lot of those people would not support the outcome. And um, and you know, so what you have is something that's not good, it's okay. Um, and it was five years of work, numerous, numerous volunteer hours, um, to get here and um, and I, I really lament the fact that, um, you know, we're losing public involvement um, in our communities because we are better when we hear voices. Sometimes it's annoying to hear voices, sometimes the voices aren't that nice, sometimes the voices are a little uh, self-interested, I recognize all that, but the Oregon way is for our communities really to weigh in on what they look like in the long term. And um, I really would hope that the county and that you as the Planning Commission would think deeply about whether that's meaningful anymore, whether you um, you are willing to, to hear the expertise and history and knowledge that people can bring to you or if in the, in, to benefit, um, making things fast and cheap, you want to do away with that. And um, and just understand the consequences of that in the long term. Um, you know, the public being seen as a nuisance is, um, you know, a real, I think, loss um, to our county. And the loss, of course, the whole process lost our community advisory committees, you know, as a whole. Um, but along the way, you're going to see, as I noted in my first testimony, uh, you know, county staff continuing to eliminate public involvement. And you, as the Public Involvement Committee of the, um, of the county, have an opportunity to push back on that and I encourage you to do so. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you for that, uh, however, you know, this, this is a hearing just open on the, the, I'll call it the Elcow Community Plan, uh, Lewis and Clark Only Waluski Community Plan. So those general comments are appreciated, but um, we need to take up Ordinance twenty four zero eight as presented in our packet. Are there any other members of the public? I see none, so at this point I will pose public testimony and um, we can move to a discussion, uh, on Planning Commission members, if there is any. I don't see anybody chomping at the bit to discuss anything, I'll just say that um, again, turning, turning to the policy portion of uh, this community plan, it um, takes up just three pages at the back there and um, most of it is just talking about, the, the policies relevant to the particular land use issue are really addressed more fully in the uh, county plan under each goal element. And that's fine and, and maybe that's a good thing to include really in all the plans to show that we're not ignoring these things, they're, they're just taken up elsewhere. However, I was, I was kind of surprised in this area that there wasn't something in the policies regarding dykes. Um, there's a lot of dykes in that area and there's a lot of problems with them and it's even discussed a little bit in the narrative that um, some of the dyke, dyking, they used to be dyking districts, some of those have dissolved, some of them um, just kind of withered away and nobody knows what happened to them, but the point is, um, there's nothing here in policies as to a need for assessment of the condition, of the responsibility for maintenance of these dykes and I, um, I suppose that might be something that's in the uh, I don't know what to refer to the, the main part of the plan when we take them up goal by goal, but um, I'll ask Director Henrickson, is this, is there something in the overall plan under, not sure what goal it would be, but dealing with, uh, directly with our dykes because uh, it's a factor in any places that have kind of an estuary or larger streams. Is, is that in our big plan?
I wasn't sure if you were finished, I didn't want to cut you off, sorry. So um, if I recall correctly, and again, I have not read everything thoroughly prior to this meeting, so I'm working on. So I'm working on my brain, which isn't always the strongest asset that I own. But I do believe that Goal 11, Public Facilities and Services, does have discussion about dyking districts. The county only operates a handful, not even a full handful, of dyking districts. A lot of these are just lingering out there. Some are still operated by private entities and they are their own districts. And so I think the reason we don't see much discussion, and Mike may want to, Commissioner Maguire may want to discuss this also, since he was at these meetings as well, is that maintenance of the dykes is not necessarily something that would fall under the land use zoning category, the maintenance and repair and operation of them, other than if they needed a permit. So that may be also part of why you don't see much discussion about it in a policy.
Okay. And I would just echo Ms. Hendrickson's comments about that, that it's the dyking districts have jurisdiction over their dykes, end of story. And they are convoluted. And Chair Farrar, you're correct that there might not be an obvious dyking district anymore or even a leader. And finding who to contact to talk about a dyke can be a challenge in and of itself. And there's a lot of convoluted paperwork out there. And it's one of the most tangled issues that I've encountered doing business in Clatsop County. But they are there. And if they fail, we're all screwed, you know? I don't even know if they've been certified by the Corps of Engineers. And to imagine that there's, you know, compounding issues with flood insurance surrounding those dykes, it's a huge issue. I don't even know if this report is the appropriate place to address specifically the dykes. But yeah, it would be interesting to address those, considering there's a lot of people that live behind them. That's, I mean, I can talk more specifically, but generally, that's just my thought on it.
Well, I appreciate those thoughts. And I do understand now that maybe I'm thinking that belongs in a document like this when it really belongs, it definitely belongs somewhere, but maybe not here. So I do find most of the policies, as they're worded, in this local plan or community plan, they just seem kind of toothless. I'll put it that way. But I guess there's two ways of looking at these things. And I was just expecting a little more, something you could point to that was really directing how we'd like to see development in these areas. The way these plans are worded now, they're pretty general and they're very kind of flexible. And they bring up a point of concern, but they don't really take a strong position on how the county's going to behave. And maybe, maybe that's just the way community plans are. And when the time comes or an issue comes to head, they'll just have to be, you know, something more specific and definite about the way that land use issue will be dealt with. But overall, this plan, like the others, just doesn't say enough about preserving some of the natural qualities that I think were important to so many people in those areas that participated, that I heard from. So I'm not, not excited about it. But I'm done rambling. So does any other Commissioner wish to make any final thoughts or?
Yeah, I'll say something. From what I recall, being a part of this, and this was, I think, during the COVID, like, I think when COVID was hitting, and then it was in the middle of all that, I just don't think a lot of people were completely engaged or they were, and this is the result. I think that from what I recall, and maybe the staff can correct me or add to this, I think at the time, there was a lot of concern about, vocal concern about whether the county Public Works Department was going to be able to move to that facility off of the, just south of the National Park and whether a new road was going to be graded out and whether that was going to become a used road. And I think that my observation on community members in this particular area is that people are pretty relaxed. It's a very low-key area. And I think people were upset about a road. But that didn't really have anything to do with the plan. It was just something that they showed up and they thought, well, they could say something to somebody. Well, that, I think that maybe Chair Farrar, people are interested if something affects them imminently, right? An impact to my lifestyle, there's going to be more noise. I can't have a gun. I can't add a garage. You know, what, those kinds of things are very important for people. But just generally, long-term planning, it's a very difficult concept for the average citizen to engage in. And maybe one or two people might know a little bit about how to think about those things. But I just, it's not what I've seen as part of the process. But people were engaged. There were a lot of committee members that had opinions. But I don't know, I haven't counted the list, but it's less than 12. So, I mean, obviously, county staff has been deeply involved in this and they probably have lists and lists of comments from the general public. So I think that what you're seeing with this one and others is that it's pretty low-key generally. But that's just my opinion on what I saw.
Well, I certainly, I certainly value your opinion. And some of what you said, maybe finally got through to me in some way. Maybe I was expecting something different that was not really realistic from these plans. So I should have talked to you sooner, Commissioner Maguire. With that, how about?
I have a question.
fresh voices here. Oh, go ahead, Commissioner Linder.
On the, let's see, it's page 139 of our packet. Under sub-area estuary policies, Policy A and Policy B, the three bullet points below both Policy A and Policy B are identical. And I wondered if that was intentional.
I think that it is intentional, Commissioner Linder, as one is dealing with the Youngs River and I think the other one is the Lewis and Clark River. So they could be combined into one policy. But that was, I think, why they're listed separately, is they were two different water bodies.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Well, maybe somebody that knows that area really well would like to make a motion on that plan.
I'll make a motion, but I've got to go find the page to make a motion on. So just give me a second.
Well, if you just use the ordinance language at the top of page 109, Packet Page 109, it talks about Ordinance 2408.
Let's see. Page 109. So I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance, to adopt the ordinance for the Lewis and Clark Only Waluski Community Plan 2408.
Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Maguire to recommend adoption of the Lewis and Clark Only Waluski Community Plan 2040, Ordinance 2408, as I have a second.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Commissioner Kraushaar. And we can move to a vote on whether to recommend to the Board of Commissioners to adopt Ordinance 2408 as presented in our packet. May we have a roll call?
Clark Powers.
Aye.
Mike Maguire.
Aye.
Terry Johnson.
Aye.
Jeremy Linder.
Aye.
Jason Kraushaar.
Aye.
Christopher Farr.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously by the six of us present. So the, we pass to the county commissioners for their consideration of adoption of Ordinance 2408. And we can move on then to Agenda Item 5, Ordinance 2409, the Northeast Community Plan. And that begins on Packet Page 143. And welcome up. I will, I will ask if there's any Commissioner have a conflict of interest to report on this matter. And I see none. And does anyone object to the jurisdiction of the Commission to hear this matter at this time? And I see none. And we've had the general staff report. So following our format this morning, we'll move to open for public testimony. Anyone wishing to step forward and give their thoughts and ideas on the proposed Ordinance 2409, please approach the floor and sign in, state their name and address before speaking. And I don't see anyone at this time that wishes to speak. So I will close the public testimony and move directly to a discussion by the Planning Commissioners on the Northeast Community Plan. And this is a fairly lengthy plan. Anybody have any thoughts or questions on this for discussion or for staff? Not, I'm just briefly looking through my notes here.
I don't want to sound like a broken record, but I can truly appreciate all the efforts and the time and energy that's went into this from the community, from the meetings, from the staff. And we've all went over this several times. And it's, if we're looking for a form of perfect, what is perfect? My perfect is different than your perfect and anybody else's. And I think that, I think that these are great. I think that we've all spent a lot of time going through them. And we can, each one of us can pick out something in here that we don't like or that we'd like changed. I think that where they're at now, for the majority of them, is where the consensus has come from, from all of these meetings, all of these, all the community involvement. And it's a good combination of what's been brought forth through all of these.
Okay. Any else have some thoughts on that? I did have a few thoughts about wondering why such and such a policy was not in there. But I will go forward under the assumption that some of my concepts and ideas may be contained in the more general plan under the specific goal item. I had questions about housing and why there wouldn't be something specifically in there to encourage or support increased housing in those communities that are already rather notable out there in the Northeast section, Napa, Swenson and Westport. But I'm going to go on the assumption that those are taken up in housing, which I think is Goal 10. And so I will forego any further comments on that and ask if one of the commissioners would like to model a motion around the heading on Page 143 that talks about Ordinance 2409.
I'll make a motion. We recommend to the Board of Commissioners adopt Ordinance 24-09 as presented.
Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Kraushaar to recommend to the Board to adopt Ordinance 2409. Is there a second to that?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Commissioner Powers. So we're voting on whether or not to recommend to the Clatsop Board of Commissioners adoption of Ordinance 2409 and ordinance adopting the Northeast Community Plan 2040. If we may have a roll call, please.
Clark Powers.
Aye.
Mike Maguire.
Aye.
Terry Johnson.
Aye.
Jeremy Linder.
Aye.
Jason Kraushaar.
Aye.
Christopher Farr.
Aye.
So the motion carries 6 to 0 unanimous recommendation to move Ordinance 2409 Northeast Community Plan to the Board of Commissioners and with the recommendation of adoption. We'll move on to Item 6 on the agenda, which is Ordinance 24010, the Seaside Rural Community Plan. And. This is a legislative hearing regarding Ordinance 24, wait a minute.
10.
2410, Seaside Rural Community Plan. And I'm going to ask if any Commissioner has a conflict of interest to report regarding this matter. And I see none. And does anyone have an objection to the jurisdiction of the Commission to hear this matter at this time? And I see none. And we have our general staff report. So we'll move to opening the public hearing to testimony. I don't see anybody in the audience ready to testify. Is there anyone online who wishes to testify at this point on this ordinance? No. So we'll close the public testimony for now and we'll move on to a discussion by the Planning Commissioners on the Seaside Rural Community Plan 2040. And. Do we have anyone who wishes to lead off on a discussion on that?
Well, as with all the plans, I find them highly educational for me about the county area. But as far as any specific questions, I like what I see.
Anybody else? Would anybody feel strongly about? Would anybody, uh, feel strongly about maybe making a motion at this point regarding adoption of Ordinance 2410?
Okay, you talked me into it, so. I'll move we adopt Ordinance 2410 Seaside Rural Community Plan as presented by staff.
Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Powers to, uh, recommend adoption of Ordinance 24 hyphen 10, the Seaside Rural Community Plan. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second. Mike got me.
Commissioners, it's been moved by Commissioner Powers and seconded by Commissioner Magyar that we, uh, move, that we recommend to the Clatsop Board of Commissioners adoption of, uh, Ordinance 24 hyphen 10, uh, the Seaside Rural Community Plan 2040 as, uh, as represented in our packet. So, we'll take a roll call vote for that.
Clark Powers.
Aye.
Mike Magyar.
Aye.
Terry Johnson.
Aye.
Jeremy Linder.
Aye.
Jason Kraushaar.
Aye.
Christopher Farr.
Aye.
So, motion carries six to zero, all, all present voted in favor of, uh, recommending to the Board of Commissioners that, uh, they adopt Ordinance 24 hyphen 10, the Seaside Rural Community Plan 2040. And, uh, with that, we will move on to Item Number 7, uh, regarding Ordinance 24 dash 11, the Southwest Coastal Community Plan. And, um, that's going to be a legislative hearing again, and, uh, I will ask any, does any Commissioner have a conflict of interest to participate in this matter? And I don't see anybody recording that, so we'll ask if, uh, anyone objects to the jurisdiction of this Commission to hear this matter at this time, and I don't see anyone objecting. So, we will go forward. Um, we've had a staff report, uh, so I will, uh, open the hearing for public testimony at this time. And, uh, looking around the room, I don't see anyone wishing to, but there's someone online?
Yes, can you hear, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Well, thank you, um, Commissioners.
And I just ask that you state your name and address before speaking, and, and please stay on, um, on the specific, uh, ordinance at hand, 24 hyphen 11.
Yes, um, thank you. Uh, my name is Linda Ironman, 80296 Pacific Road in Arch Cape, and I am a Citizens Advisory Committee member for the Southwest Coastal Region. Um, I worked with four other, uh, appointed, uh, committee members on this plan, um, for over two years. Um, I personally put in over a hundred hours on it, but this is not the plan that we submitted. Um, the plan that we submitted was 51 pages, uh, without maps, what the text. What you have in front of you is 16 pages of text with maps. And I want to point out that last year in August of 2022, you approved a plan that was 25 pages for our region, and where has the nine pages from there gone? Where is the explanation? We have been left out, um, of this process since we turned in our final plan at the end of 2021. Um, our 51 pages went to 16 without any involvement of the CAC and really without any public involvement. Um, there was plenty before then. We personally held three town halls in our region, um, in order to be sure that we had full input from our community, and some of the things that have been removed probably were properly removed because legal did a review, but that was early in the process. Um, we, for example, now though, even our goal on wetlands, that the, um, that the goal five process be completed for the Arch Cape wetlands, the goal has been removed. We, everything has been removed that relates to the need for a master plan on the east side of the highway in Arch Cape, which if you're familiar with it at all, you know that it's all forest and wetlands, and there's a lot of lots that are being developed. Um, also removed is most everything we proposed about climate change and sea level rise, and that is such an important issue in our community that is right along the ocean there, natural hazards, most of that has been removed, and everything relating to short-term rentals, and we have half of the short-term rentals in the county in our region. So, I would like to say that the process that brought this particular plan to you today is defective in the sense that it has lacked public involvement. The process, the, of review started out, as Nadia Gardner mentioned, with a lot of excitement on the part of the community, but what we're left with is pretty much a gutted shell. And I would like to see, um, some additional work done to, with the community so that we have a plan that really reflects, um, what we need in our region. Thank you.
I thank you for those comments. I don't believe we have anyone else from the public wishing to comment at this time, so I'm going to close the hearing to public testimony, and we can move to, uh, a discussion amongst, uh, Planning Commissioners regarding this plan or possibly making a motion, what to do with the plan. Anybody have some specifics that they would like to bring up or...
Well, I, I'm interested in specifically what, um, Ms. Ironman is, uh, seeing in her 50-page plan that wasn't included in the 26-page plan, and what maybe in the 26-page plan was omitted from the plan as we look at it now. I mean, we don't have to go into detail, I just would like a comment on maybe one or two items of importance, just to hear, uh, what they thought was important and, and what was omitted.
Um, I would, yeah, ask Commissioner, Director Henderson to talk to that.
Please.
I would ask Director Henderson to talk to that.
All right. Would you like to address those comments, Director Henderson?
Actually, we, Ian Sisson, our senior planner, was the, uh, planner who led that committee and worked primarily on this plan, so I'm going to defer to him.
Okay.
Good morning, Commissioners. Ian Sisson, Senior Planner. Uh, as Gail mentioned, I was the staff liaison for the Southwest Coastal Citizen Advisory Committee during that process, um, and I just wanted to note that, um, we did hold a final meeting with that committee where they recommended, um, a version of this plan to, uh, for us to bring forth to the Planning Commission and then to the Board of Commissioners for adoption. And so, um, the Planning Commission has seen that version of this plan in the past. I don't recall exactly who, um, on the current commission would have been around for that review, uh, but it was something that was submitted to you for review. Um, and then as Gail mentioned, we had some additional process where, um, you know, the Board of Commissioners decided to pull the community plans from their, um, public hearing agenda for adoption so that we could revisit the contents, and, um, as Gail described, there was a filtering process that did pare these down pretty significantly. That included, um, legal review by our Land Use Council. That also included staff review for policies that, um, that were not necessarily specific to a given planning area, so there were many policies that were pulled out and they were moved into the general comprehensive plan goals. Um, and then there were also policies that were removed, um, again, because they were either legally not possible or in many circumstances, they were too specific for this level of a plan document, and those are set aside for potential adoption into the Land and Water Development and Use Code as development standards. And so, um, you know, policies that recommended very specific development standards such as a setback to a wetland boundary, uh, of 50 feet, for example, I think was one of those, uh, those kinds of policies were removed from this plan because they do not belong in a higher level community plan document. Those would be development standards for the, for the zoning code. Um, and so through that filtering process, yes, um, the plan became quite a bit shorter. There were also elements of the narrative that, um, addressed topics such as short-term rentals and had, um, quite a bit of editorialized language, um, that was not necessarily stating facts, it was stating opinions, and so we removed some of that opinion-based editorial-type language on a few subjects. Short-term rentals specifically are also a topic that the Board has been discussing over the past few years in terms of how to regulate those, and so we did not feel it was appropriate to include policy recommendations for short-term rentals while, while that's a Board of Commissioners, um, project that they are working on separately from these plans. So, um, one of the items that Ms. Ironman mentioned, other than short-term rentals, was , uh, policies related to climate change and sea level rise. Those items, I believe, were moved into Goal 7 because they apply not only to the Southwest Coastal Planning Area. Um, and then as far as a wetland policy related to a Goal Five process for wetlands in the planning area, there was a policy, the only one that I recall that specifically recommended a Goal Five process was to, um, to conduct a Goal Five process for a wetland that's in the Cove Beach area, which, um, some people colloquially refer to as Cove Beach Lake, and, um, that is something that was pulled, um, because there, there actually is not a, a lake called Cove Beach Lake, and, um, wetlands are another topic that apply, um, countywide, and then there's also a local wetlands inventory, which probably is in need of being updated, so that, you know, specific policy recommendations, um, for, for some of those were, were pulled out and set aside.
Thank you for those clarifications and, uh, discussion and expansion on, uh, points made by our members of the committee.
I apologize to interrupt. One other item I had noted that Ms. Ironman brought up was, uh, develop, developing a master plan for the east side of Arch Cape. That is something that we discussed, um, several times with the Citizen Advisory Committee during their process, and if you're not already aware, the east side of Arch Cape was platted, um, into a subdivision of 50 by 100 lots. Uh, between 1900 and 1920, there were two different phases of that plat, and, um, so that is the master plan for that side of Arch Cape, and there's now, um, you know, many, many, many different property owners of those lots in Arch Cape, and so for the county to, um, to create a new development plan, a new arrangement of lots and streets is probably not feasible considering the number of private property owners that are there on that side of the highway. So, we have this, you know, gridded 50 by 100 subdivision plat that we're working with, um, and it, it's probably not feasible to recreate that plat with all the different property ownership, private property interests that are there already.
I'd, I'd like to say that I really appreciate Mr. Sisson's comments. I think they're excellent, and I'll further say regarding the plat, as the only licensed surveyor here, uh, it would be what we refer to as a cluster bomb to try to do any kind of master plan over the top of a platted subdivision. Unfortunately, the master plans come before the subdivisions get platted, and that should be fairly obvious to almost anybody who's got any experience whatsoever, uh, in that kind of thing. So, you guys did a great job, and thanks again for your comments.
Well, thank you for your comments on that, Commissioner Magyar. I must say that, uh, as I look through the, uh, the policies for this community plan area, um, they're just all just made so weak, but, um, I understand there's a need to keep these general kinds of documents kind of, uh, flexible, so there's a lot of maze in there, um, but some I wonder why it's may and not just should or shall, and, uh, you know, to me setbacks from wetlands make a lot of sense, and I know it matters to people there, I've heard people comment from down there about it, and, um, it's part of the character of the area. Uh, this area is really rather unique in that it's only five square miles, I think, so, but it is a unique area of the county in a way, uh, because there's so much of the county that's forest land, can't really be developed except for, uh, natural resource that's there. Um, so this stands as a, um, kind of an iconic Oregon coast area of our county, and it's kind of precious whether you live there or not, and I don't live there, so. I just hope that 50 years from now, it still kind of looks similar to the way it does now, and that it's not opened up to poorly thought-out plans for increasing housing and that sort of thing, um, or armoring beaches, which is a dreadful idea, and is one of the policies here, um, out-armoring seawalls and revetments and all sorts of things that generally just wreak more havoc along the coast in terms of erosion. Um, the county may consider, well, fire-resistant building requirements for buildings, why not just make it a requirement? I think it's on Housing Policy 2, the county should encourage the development of housing for the low and moderate income persons in the Southwest Coastal Planning Area through agencies such as Northwest Housing Association, et cetera, et cetera. I don't- I don't really see that area as appropriate for developing low or middle-income housing. It's always going to be an expensive area unless the county comes in there and just turns it into what the rest of the county looks like in places like Nappan Swenson or something. I think that's too bad if that happens. I was a little confused by the meaning of, under Public Facilities Recommendations on page 257 of our packet. There's a, one policy there, "The county may coordinate with area watershed councils to map and define the watersheds in the Southwest Coastal Planning Area." What is the objective of mapping and defining watersheds in that area? I mean, I think protecting them might make sense. They're all mapped. They're out there. So, is, could one of the planning staff comment on that? What, what that policy is intended to do?
Chair Farrar, you're correct that that intent of that policy would be to understand where exactly those drinking watersheds are. The county doesn't currently have a GIS layer for that. There may be other resources out there where you can find those maps, but the county itself does not have that information as a GIS layer. So, this would be something that would be useful for potential future planning purposes if we wanted to increase the protection of those watersheds.
So, you mentioned in what you just said, drinking water, watersheds, which sounds redundant, but they're specific to drinking water sources. So, is that what it's for? Because it doesn't say drinking water. It just says...
Chair Farrar, this policy is under Public Facilities, so yes, that would be for drinking water sources, not the entire watershed, just the water that is used for the drinking water sources in the area.
Well, I would think that making it clear on drinking water would be important, but Another example is under Open Space Historic Recreation Scenic Natural Areas Policies on page 259 of the packet. "The county may collaborate with Oregon Parks and Rec to obtain, to retain the scenic values of the Oregon Coast Trail." Just "may" collaborate? Why wouldn't they just jump at the chance to collaborate?
Chair Farrar, if I could respond to that, I know you asked the, the same type of maybe rhetorical question on a couple of the other policies that use the word "may" or "should." Generally speaking, in this type of a plan document, it can be, so if, if we have a policy that says "shall," the county is legally obligated to do that. And if they do not, there could be litigation against the county for not pursuing it. So, when you have, you know, a pretty full community development work plan that may not be, be able to address a certain policy right away or within a defined period of time, it's better to use a word like "should" or "may" so that the county doesn't fall out of compliance with its plan. But yes, that's absolutely something, you know, many of these policies are absolutely things that we want to be able to do, that the county should do or may do. But it, it can be tricky if you assign a "shall" to too many things that there might not be actual capacity to take on.
But the weakest word was selected for so many there. Anyway, I'm just lamenting. Would one of the planning commissioners wish to make a motion unless there's further discussion? And I don't see further discussion, so is there someone who would like to make a motion around Ordinance 24 hyphen 11? And I think actually, in that addendum packet you sent out, it referred to this as 2410.
Yeah, it did.
So, don't do that. This is 2411, so...
Chair Farrar, yes, in the agenda, it's called out as Ordinance 2411. I did notice that the ordinance document itself that was sent to you as a follow-up, I believe, yesterday, in the top right corner says Ordinance 2410. That should be 2411. Elsewhere in that document, it does say 2411.
Okay.
So, just to confirm, it is 2411.
Yeah. Good.
I apologize for my error.
No big deal. We want to make the right motion here, so if someone...
I'll move that. We recommend approval to the Board of Commissioners of Ordinance 24 dash 11, Southwest Coastal Community Plan.
Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Johnson to recommend to the Board of Commissioners to adopt Ordinance 2411, the Southwest Coastal Community Plan. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Commissioner Powers. So, we have a motion and a second to recommend to the Board of Commissioners to adopt Ordinance 2411, the Southwest Coastal Community Plan 2040, as presented in our packet. Okay, we have a roll call vote, please.
Clark Powers.
Aye.
Mike Magyar.
Aye.
Terry Johnson.
Aye.
Jeremy Linder.
Aye.
Jason Crashhour.
Aye.
Christopher Farr.
So, the vote is six-zero. The motion carries with a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners to adopt Ordinance 2411, Southwest Coastal Community Plan as presented in our packet. And that ends the cumbersome public hearings, and we can move to a discussion of Agenda Item Eight, which is Clear and Objective Standards Code Audit, Article One. And I assume staff will give us some report on that.
Yes. So, as I explained to your Planning Commission last month, with the adoption of House Bill 3197 in 2023, the county is going to be required to adopt clear and objective standards for housing on lands that are non-resourced lands, rural, and rural residential lands. And we have to have those done by July 1st, 2025. So, this month, we will be looking at Article One, which is primarily our definitions section in the code. And staff has gone through and pulled out any other provisions and definitions that are in Article One that could relate to housing, are related to housing, or could be related to the development of housing. And we've tried to add in explanations for where we have proposed changes. We have tried to add in clarifying diagrams to help explain concepts that may be foreign to both, not only property owners who are trying to develop their properties, but even for planners, sometimes it's difficult to conceptualize some of these ideas when you have a very odd-shaped lot. So, we're not here to make a decision tonight on, or today, I guess it's not tonight yet, but we're not here today to make any final decisions or votes. But what staff is looking for from the Planning Commission is, on this first go-around of Article One, are there things that you have immediately seen where we have made changes that do not result in clear and objective language? Are there additional definitions needed? Are there additional diagrams needed? Are there areas where staff may have missed something that is not clear and objective? And so, it's really to begin to have that discussion and start thinking about how the clear and objective path is going to look. And so, this is not the first go-around on what you will see on this. We will be bringing it back in future iterations, but really today, just to start this discussion with what we've provided you on the definitions section primarily.
Thank you very much for that staff report. Throw it open to any commissioner to give their opinions or comments on this.
Well, I just wanted to say, I think this sounds very exciting. So, I, I just, I think it's great and looking forward to participating in this.
I'll just make one general comment, and you alluded to it, Director Henrickson, is the, the idea of having little figures or diagrams that show some of these things really is, is helpful. And I think, you know, can, can, can really, even though it takes up space in the document, it's well worth the space because it makes things so much more clear. So, I, I would encourage even more diagrams, but then I'm a kind of a diagram kind of guy. And I looked through this, but I must say I had to move along at a good clip, and most of what I saw in the way of strikeouts and additions in wording to clarify things seemed pretty good to me. So, I like what I'm seeing so far. I, I might, at some later point, have a comment that, you know, suggests something a little different. One, one of your diagrams, though, that, I may not have gotten it right, but on page 272 of our packet, there's the, a diagram of the infamous flag lot, which is always of interest to me. And I, it shows the front line of the flag lot is kind of back away from the street, and I think it's really supposed to be at the street, isn't it?
On the street.
Or am I missing?
No, I, I thought, I thought it was on the street. Front of the flag is on, like you pull it on the street. No, I see what you're saying.
I see, I see it pointing though to the...
Yeah, 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 I see. But I was looking at the access road, but I'm sure that's the wrong term, access road. But, because it is that narrow strip touching the street.
So, I, I don't know if that's...
It's the public right-of-way, I guess.
Yeah, so, I think there are two ways that you could look at a flag lot, and, I mean, in a previous job that I held, we would have considered the, the top line of the flag lot, the wide part, as the actual front property line, not the skinny little setback line. Because otherwise, if you count the flag pole as where you are going to measure your setback from, if, if you have a 20-foot setback, you could build in the middle of your access road and, you know, and then do you come to the, to the hearings officer for variance because you only have a 25-foot flag pole and now you can't build your house there? So, this is really where the line, in my professional opinion, should be measured from. I don't think that's been our standard practice here in, in Clotsett County. But that's, that's a bigger discussion we may want to think about because we want to make sure that we are being clear and objective when we make that determination.
And then, the other thing is that a lot of the material in here, I mean, this is, for the most part, a lot of this is definitions. And so, there was a, big sections that were taken out that weren't really part of the definition, which makes sense, and we moved them to some other section of the code, which, I don't know what it was, but...
Yeah, we did try to remove the development standards and the requirements from the definitions and put them, we will move them to the actual section of code that addresses that type of development.
Yeah, that, that makes sense. And will we see that then?
Yeah, so we are going to be working article by article through this process. When we come back in February, we're going to start talking about Article Two, which is the, the article that discusses our, our processes for, for different types of applications. And that one will be broken up over several months because that, there, there's going to be some pretty deep discussions that we'll have to have and look at that.
Good. So, this is just, just to be clear, this is just the first step? That we're just at the definition, and then we're going to keep going through?
Yeah.
Through these?
Yeah, so...
So, so far, what I see is it looks to clean it up quite a bit and just clarify, and I think it's a good start. We'll, we'll get into the meat of it a little bit later, but...
Yeah, I would defer to you two and possibly the surveyor, Fisher Magyar, for, I think these are great definitions. If they clarify for you when you have conversations, then I think we've kind of met our goal.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, I guess by consensus, the Planning Commission likes what they see so far. And moving right along as time is pressing on us here, Agenda Item Nine is the Fiscal Year 2324 Work Plan Update, Second Quarter.
Yeah, and that's included in your agenda package. Staff has been doing these quarterly updates for about a year and a half now. We are in the process of starting to create the Fiscal Year 2425 Work Plan, which will be coming back to your Planning Commission, I would suspect, maybe in March. And you'll be looking at that. But in the meantime, with the one that's been approved by the board, we have been trying to give both you and, and the Board of Commissioners quarterly updates about where we are in the process. So, really, if you have any questions about specific projects, I'm here to answer those. Thank you.
Yeah, I have only one question. It's probably more clarification than anything else. It's on Ask Three, Number D, on page, the 286, where it talks about development, implement a work plan for state mandated Committee for City Involvement, Citizen Involvement, my apologies. Is that just something way on the back burner?
Um, that is something that would actually need to begin with a discussion with the Board of Commissioners. So, the, there is no requirement to have a Planning Commission within the state of Oregon, but there is a requirement to have a Citizen Involvement Committee. And so, you as the Planning Commission act as that committee. And if there were to be any changes or expansion or revisions to that, to your Citizen Involvement Committee role, that would be something that would begin with the Board of Commissioners. And so, we haven't had that discussion with them yet.
So, we're not, I mean, we are in compliance to date for the state mandated Committee for Citizen Involvement via the Planning Commission.
Yep.
Is that correct? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think it, I think it may even be stated in our bylaws.
Oh, it is. It's just that when you put it down as a project that you got to do...
Oh, I understand.
That's having a question.
Yeah. Anybody else have a particular project they're wondering about, have a question? All right. Well, that's, it's nice to have those summaries, and it does serve as a quick outline way of keeping up to date on what's going on. So, I appreciate you including those. And then, we have a little one-page report on the geotechnical report preparation, which is on packet page 300, I believe.
Yeah, and this is less a report than some questions and looking for some direction from the Planning Commission. So, a year or two ago, when Ian drafted the initial updates and we were looking at updating the maps for the geologic hazard, we eventually ended up pulling that project, but then later, earlier this year, last year, Ian moved forward some amendments to add the exemptions and to extend the shelf life of a geologic hazard study from two years to five years. And one of the things that he had included in his original set of amendments was to allow geotechnical reports to be prepared by a geotechnical engineer, and I hope I'm stating this correctly. But when we pulled the item and then moved forward with the other amendments, we neglected to put that back in. And I know that it, we have had some concerns raised by some of the local development community about not having that provision in there. And so, I know that Commissioner Johnson had called me and we had had a discussion about this, and he had asked for it to be placed for discussion on today's agenda. So, I'm actually, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Okay, well, thank you. I know that other jurisdictions that are neighboring jurisdictions allow an engineer rather than a certified engineering geologist, which they're somewhat different, to provide recommendations. And, and most of the time, when you're doing a development, that's really what you need is, is the expertise on how to construct in a geo-hazard zone, not necessarily the overarching geology of, of the area. So, it's more applicable, and I think that it would be a, a wise move for the county to... to just have an engineering geologist be qualified to provide the report that are needed to build in a geo-hazard overlay zone. So I would support this, that move. Also, it's hard to find a geologist that are local. You're going to go out of town to find somebody that has the required qualifications under the existing standards, so I think that we should change that.
Well, I would take the opposite view on that. I think it'd be very much a mistake to count on a professional engineer to do the job of what an engineering geologist does. It depends on the background of the particular engineer and what, you know, additional schooling they have, and I wouldn't be surprised if many engineers actually take some geology classes to learn some of that stuff.
What I'm, I guess I'm referring to specifically is a geotechnical engineer, someone who's-
Well, here it just says professional engineers. It says geotechnical engineers and professional engineers, and, I mean, professional engineers opens, wide open to people that may not have any geotechnical expertise at all.
Chris Farrar, if I could comment on a couple of things. So in the proposal that I brought to you, whatever it was, a year or two ago, the way that I worded the code language was that there would have to be a statement included in the geotechnical report, that the person or people preparing that report had the required qualifications to prepare the report and to make the recommendations that they were making. So the Oregon State of Geologic, the Oregon Board of Geologic Examiners, OSGBE, they have standards for the preparation of geotechnical reports, and as you, I'm sure, are aware, each certification has professional standards that they're required to abide by. And so, you know, the three types of geo-professionals, as we would refer to them as, are registered geologists, certified engineering geologists, and geotechnical engineers, which is a subset of professional engineer. And so, so many times, in order to meet the code-required standards that are listed in our code for the preparation of geotechnical reports and to meet the OSGBE standards, a certified engineering geologist is going to be qualified almost every time to meet those requirements. In other cases, it might be a registered geologist working with a CEG or working with a geotechnical engineer. In some cases, a geotechnical engineer alone may be able to provide that report, but again, they would be required to certify that they're qualified to do the analysis and to make the recommendations that are spelled out in our code and at the state level for that type of a report. So essentially, that professional is going to be putting their license on the line by saying, you know, "I'm qualified and certified to do this type of work and make these types of recommendations." And so I don't believe any PE, other than a geotechnical engineer, is going to be able to certify that, so they will have had the level of geotechnical and geologic training and education required to be able to get that particular stamp and to be able to stamp those types of reports.
Okay, well, that's a helpful clarification and explanation, and alleviates some of my concerns.
Yeah, I don't think the idea is just to have any old engineer give geotechnical, engineering advice. I just see this as something that's necessary. One of the big issues we have is just the lack of these professionals here. We just, if you are building in a geo-hazard overlay, and it takes you six months before you can get a response out of somebody, it's just not practical, and it's delaying projects unnecessarily.
Take your luck, too.
So I think this is a move in the right direction. I'd like to see it continued, and then, I don't know, what we need next? Is it a recommendation to the board, or what's the next step?
So what staff would like to propose is, in conjunction with the housing amendments that we've been talking to the board about and that we're having a meeting about next week for public information, staff made a commitment that we would also like to do a survey of how other jurisdictions, other counties, are handling their geologic hazard requirements, and to bring all of that back to your planning commission as a package, with the changes to the professionals and then any other recommendations that come out of that survey, and maybe bring that back, probably, I would think, more in May of twenty of this year. So we have one set of amendment packages. We would not be proposing at this time any changes to the mapping, but we would leave that as a separate project.
Sounds good.
Do we need a consensus vote on this, or are you just going to move forward?
I guess I prefer that, and that's five months away, to do that one simple topic. Is there a way to speed that one up?
Well, we would, we- We would like to take it as one package. I mean, there's no reason why we couldn't do it as two separate amendments. But then, we do have, obviously, capacity issues, and for those of you who don't know, this is a good time to bring it up, this is Ian's last meeting. His last day will be Friday, and he can talk about that as well. But he's accepted a position with Mackenzie, which is a private consulting design firm, and so it's a very good opportunity for him, and we're very thankful to have had him for five and a half years, and sorry to see him go, but it's a very good opportunity. So we will also be down a planning staff member, but if you would like to have two separate ordinances, we can certainly do that, and then we could bring that back to you next month.
I'd like to see it next month. I don't see, if you have the staff to handle that, bring it on.
If it's just going to be that one change, we can do that. We can't do the whole survey, though, and any other changes that might ease regulations, so-
Sure, no, that sounds fine.
It seems like it wouldn't be that bad an idea, though, to have the surveys under our belt before we... I mean, we're stepping into new terrain here, maybe not a big deal, but it'd be interesting to see what Tillamook and Lincoln have to, on their books, if he's going to pull out of his hip pocket, that's what you say there.
So Commissioners, I just wanted to let you know that when I first prepared the proposed changes to the geologic hazards overlay, that was kind of a complete overhaul, which we stalled that project. The research that I did that went into it included a guide that was prepared by Dogami for local jurisdictions on best management practices for what information to include in their ordinances, both comprehensive plan ordinances and development code and zoning ordinances. And so that report does include a survey of many local jurisdictions, many of them were cities, but Dogami evaluated the codes of many of those local jurisdictions to find out who was requiring what and how they had set up their ordinances. So there was a degree of a survey of what other communities are doing. That report, I think, was published in 2019, so it could be very outdated by now, I don't know. But there was at least some level of review that was incorporated into Dogami's report, which communicates best practices, and that's where, you know, what I learned was that, you know, each type of geo-professional has limitations on the type of work that they are qualified and certified to do, and when it comes to their ability to prepare a report that both analyzes the hazards present on a property and makes recommendations for mitigating those hazards in building design and site preparation and construction. Again, it's almost always the case that a certified engineering geologist is going to be able to do all of that work. A registered geologist is not certified or qualified to make recommendations for site preparation and construction, they're only qualified to look at what are the hazards on the site. And then a geotechnical engineer certainly is qualified to come up with design solutions to mitigate geologic hazards, but isn't necessarily always qualified to make an evaluation of what those hazards are. So it may require, you know, there may be many circumstances where a geotechnical engineer alone still isn't qualified to prepare a report that would get a permit, that would qualify for a geologic hazard permit. They may still need to work with a registered geologist or a certified engineering geologist. So pushing this forward, you know, we could potentially reuse the code language that I had proposed, but the way that I wrote it did not specify that it can be one of these three types of professionals. The way that I wrote the code was, again, that whoever prepares the report, whether that's one or more professionals, needs to certify that they're qualified to prepare that report and to make the recommendations and findings that are included in it. So it makes it more flexible, so that if a geotechnical engineer is in fact qualified to do that, they can make that certification, they can be the only stamp on the report. In other cases, they may need to work with another professional to be able to cover the full scope of what our code requires and what the OSGBE.
Have a question on that.
That makes sense.
So if a geotechnical engineer comes to you with a report and a letter stating that "This is my experience, this is why I believe I'm capable of presenting this report," does that become an opinion of the planning department, or is that, who dictates whether or not they are okay to make that decision?
So our code lists certain information that needs to be addressed in geotechnical reports in order to obtain a geo-hazard permit, and so the professional or professionals preparing the report would need to certify that they're qualified to evaluate and make recommendations based on that full list of items and information that's required in our code. And so it's really up to them to understand the parameters of their license and what they're legally qualified to do with their license and with their stamp. And so we are taking their certification. In the scenario of the proposed code that I had come up with, we're taking their word as a licensed professional that they're qualified.
Thank you.
Well, um-
I'm in favor of moving forward.
And you're in favor of moving forward?
Yeah, I'm in favor of moving forward, too, yeah.
Do either of our two commissioners on the virtual side wish to come in on this? Or are you in agreement with the idea of moving forward with a, a, what do we call it? An amendment, or what?
The amendment to the-
An amendment regarding geotechnical reporting?
Yeah, I'd like to see the specifics, of course, when it comes to us, but generally, what we're discussing, I'm in favor of.
Yeah, I'm in favor as well, thank you.
Okay, well, it looks like we have consensus on that, so I hope it doesn't require additional work to divide it into two parts, but if you could perhaps get that to us next month's meeting, we could take action on it. So now we can move on to Item Number Eleven, the Project Statuses Report.
Yeah, that's included for informational purposes. I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from any commissioner regarding that? Nope. So again, I like having those, that's very helpful, to have that in a condensed form like that, to keep up to date on what's going on. So we'll move on to the last item of the agenda, which we've probably all been waiting for desperately here. Item Twelve, election of officers. So as you know, every year at our first meeting of the planning commission, we elect a chair and a vice chair to serve for the following year, or that year. And the way we usually do it is we start with nominations for the chair, and any commissioner is qualified to be chair, so the six of us here, but also our absent Commissioner Pritchard, all meet the requirements. And you can look at the bylaws to understand what the commitment is there for chair. And so the way I would call for this is that we open the floor for nominations, and you can just blurt out your nominations, self-nominations are allowed. Once we get all the nominations on the table, we will go through a voting process where the first one that receives a majority of the votes present, of the commissioners present today will be elected. So I open the floor for nominations to chair Clotseton County Planning Commission for the 2024 year.
I would like to nominate Christopher Farrar to continue as chair.
Okay, well, I think we didn't take this point up. I don't mean to interrupt the nomination process, but I decline the nomination. My service on the planning commission ends this June, June 30th of this year, and so there's just five more meetings, and I think it makes sense to pick a chair who's going to be able to serve through the entire year, if possible, and just for continuity. It's just the way I look at it. I appreciate the nomination, but as of now, I decline that.
Okay. I would nominate, Clark Powers as chair, as our current vice chair.
Okay, just recognize that unless I'm reappointed, my term will expire at the same time as his. So if the Board of Commissioners decides they don't want me, then I will disappear. Other than that, fine, perfect.
Well, if you would accept nomination for at least six months, and to be determined after that, then...
Any other nominations? Well, if we just have one nomination, that makes it easy, we'll still, we'll still hold the vote. I think that's appropriate, so I'll just, I guess we'll do it by roll call because it's difficult with the virtual people, so it makes it clear, so let's just go down the line.
Mike Magyar?
Uh, I, I'm going to say aye.
Carrie Johnson?
Aye, yes.
Jeremy Linder?
Yes.
Jason Kraschauer?
Yes.
Clark Powers?
Yeah.
And Christopher Farrar?
I'm in favor, so aye, yes, and all those good terms. So it looks like by unanimous vote of those present, we picked our chair for the next year, and I'm confident that it will extend beyond June, but we'll see. So Clark Powers is chair after this meeting, and now we'll move to nominations for vice chair. And again, I'll just throw it open, anybody can call out a name, you can self-nominate, so some of you may want to do that.
I'll nominate Jason Kraschauer as vice chair.
I'll second that.
There's no second-
Oh, there's no second, all right.
It's okay to second anyway, if you want.
All right, I'm not going to hit you with the ruler or anything.
My nominations for vice chair, it's a good position to have, because you don't have to necessarily be chair, but there's always that edge that you feel before the meeting that maybe you'll have to chair it.
And they won't show up, yeah.
All right, well, I don't hear any other choices, so let's go ahead with the, again, a roll call vote for- again, a roll call vote for, uh, Jason Kraschaw for our, uh, vice chair for the coming year.
Clark Powers?
Yes.
Mike Magyar?
Yes.
Kerry Johnson?
Yes.
Jeremy Linder?
Yes.
Jason Kraschaw?
Okay.
Christopher Farrar?
I'm in favor. And, uh, so the vote was, uh, six to zero on, on, uh, Jason Kraschaw being our vice chair for the year. And, um, I think we have two good officers. And, uh, thank you very much for a good meeting today. I know it was a little over, but we got a lot done. So with that, I will close the meeting.
Chris, thank you for serving as chair.